Hello, all you awesome peoples. We'll see who is able to come on this morning for this teaching portion of what we are going to be doing of maturing in hearing and discernment. So we'll give people time to come on, see if people are able to jump on this morning. Give it a little bit of time. Sometimes it takes just a little bit. Hey, good morning! How are you? It's good to see you. We'll give people some time to jump on. See if more guests are able to come on. Guys, if there are some of you that are on, just type a "good morning" and let me know that you're there. So I know we've got more participants that are on. So woo-hoo! I am glad. Hey, David, how are you, girl? And so I'm glad that you guys have been able to make it on this morning. I know we didn't give a lot of notice. We just posted last night. Last week, we took Thanksgiving week off. And this week, I was at the beginning of the week. There's, hey, there's Jenna. And we got several people on. We got Yawn that is on and "good morning." And so anyway, we got the flyer up last night that yes, we are doing this again this morning. And guys, let me know if you can hear me okay and that you're able to hear what I'm saying, okay? I hope that it is. I don't know if the picture is a little blurry. We've really got to get some. "Good morning, blessings from Colorado." Hey, Mary Lot, how are you from Montrose, Colorado? Kara Shepherd is on. Good morning, Nancy from Michigan is Saginaw. It's great to have you on this morning, guys. And I hope the picture's okay. I know at our house, sometimes the internet connection can be a little sketchy, so you can hear me, but the picture gets a little fuzzy out on the ranch. So if that's happening, I apologize about that. But at least the sound will be good. Hopefully, the picture's good this morning. And so anyway, but you can hear. Good, Victoria, how are you, girl? It's great to have you on. And so it is, it's great to see you from California. Sound is good. Awesome. Well, at least the sound is good, right? And so, but I'm so excited to continue this teaching series with you all and, you know, and with those who will be watching this at a later time as well for my new book, Discerning the Spirit Realm. And so, you know, I pray that these are, we pray that this is a blessing to you. Victoria says she's homesick with a cold today. Oh, no! We pray healing for Victoria right now in Jesus' name. And those colds are not fun, right? So anyway, we're going to continue our discussion today of discerning the spirit realm. And I pray that this is empowering all of you. And I believe today, what we are going to talk about is maturing in hearing and discernment. So I'm taking, I'm teaching from portions from chapter three. Hey, Rosie, it's good to see you. Victoria, Victoria, you get to watch because you are homesick with that cold. But I'm glad that you love the book. Yawn, I'm glad that you love it, and then it's been a blessing for you. Sheila Zimmerman, hey, girl, how are you? It's great to have Kansas on as well. And Rosie from Arizona. And so I'm going to pray, and we're going to dive in to what I feel is the, probably one of the most important parts of this teaching that I do on discernment of how to mature in hearing and in discernment and how to maneuver with it in maturing in the gift. So Holy Spirit, I thank you that you come and that you will just cause, Lord, everything that you want shared today to come forward. Lord, let there be empowerment and impartation to all who will hear this teaching, will receive from it. Lord, I thank you that it will empower them. And Lord, I thank you, Father God, for each person that is on now and that will listen in the days ahead. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Good morning, everyone. I'm so glad that you were able to make it on, even with short notice as a reminder of last night, that, hey, we are still doing this and we'll be on tomorrow morning. But I'm teaching from chapter three of the book, Maturing in Hearing and Discernment. And when I talk about this, and those of you that have read the book, you know, I say we've been learning about the different dialects of heaven, right? Seeing, hearing, feeling, sensing, dreaming, prophecy, the Word of God. We've been learning all the different ways that the Lord can speak to us. But we also have to mature. We want to mature in how we're operating in this gift. And so I'm going to talk about some of the harder things about this topic in this teaching session today. And so because we want to be able to function in the ability of understanding what he is saying, even concerning how to handle the discernment we're given with great maturity, humility, and it's something that's very important, holiness and wisdom. So I want to state first of all, there's no condemnation, you know, there's therefore now no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus. So sometimes when I start on this portion of the teaching, people get all upset, oh my goodness, I haven't handled this correctly. Don't get into condemnation. This is what the teaching is for. It's helping us to understand how to maneuver. But it is also our personal responsibility to guard and steward that which has been entrusted to us. And so we want to be able to learn how to discern without entering into a judgmental spirit. And so I'm going to read to you a scripture, 1 Corinthians 5:9 through 13. "I wrote you in my previous letter, asking you not to associate with those who practice sexual immorality; yet in no way was I referring to avoiding contact with unbelievers who are immoral or greedy or swindlers, or those who worship other gods; for that would mean you'd have to isolate yourself from the world entirely. But now I'm writing to you, so that you would exclude from your fellowship anyone who calls himself a fellow believer and practices sexual immorality, or is consumed with greed, or is an idolater, or is verbally abusive, or a drunkard, or a swindler. Don't mingle with them, or even have a meal with someone like that. What right do I have to pronounce judgment on unbelievers? That's God's responsibility. But those who are inside the church family are our responsibility." But those who are, oh, let me say it again, "but those who are inside the church family are our responsibility to discern and judge. So it's your duty to remove that wicked one from among you." Now, guys, let's look at this list. It says, "don't mingle," it says, "within our midst," right? It says, "we're not supposed to intermingle with those who practice sexual immorality, for those who are consumed with greed, for those who are an idolater, for those who are verbally abusive, a drunkard, or a swindler." This is 1 Corinthians 5:9 through 13. These are the words of Paul. Hey, Brenda Bechtel, good morning! And so these are very direct and powerful words. And so when he is speaking, we're, you know, this, obviously, we're supposed to reach out to those who are trapped in the bondage of sin and those who are lost. We don't shun people, but, you know, it's the heart of Jesus, you know, and He has sacrificially and victoriously died, that all may have the opportunity to know Him and come into salvation. But there are some people, you know, sadly enough, who might not ever choose, you know, this life-altering decision with Jesus. But we continue to pray for them. We witness to them. We want to see those who are lost. We want to see them brought into salvation. And so, but Paul is also talking about, you know, situations within the church. And so the Greek word used in this scripture for judge is kryno, K-R-I-N-O. And it means to judge, to distinguish, to prefer, to decide, to evaluate, to make a legal decision, to govern, to condemn. Oh, it even says to punish. Now, I'm, we're, anyway, just, we're going to get it in balance. So these are very powerful words. But these actions are based on the knowledge of the Word of God and the context of spirit scriptural protocol, right? So the scripture is not giving all of us who operate in discernment the license to become the Holy Spirit from the entire church or the body of Christ. However, we are not to ignore certain behaviors. You cannot ignore them and just sweep them under the rug as if they do not exist. That's not what Paul is saying we are to do in this scripture. It is very evident that when these kinds of activities are going on within the church, that they are to deal with these issues and not be allowed to be entertained in someone's life or within the church body. Now, hear me. It is a leadership responsibility to deal with moral issues at this level. And so, so it is my prayer that more in the church will begin to rise up in obedience to the Word of God. And we are, and during this time, we are seeing more and more churches not only tolerating, I'm just going to say it, perversion, homosexuality, lesbianism, but, and, but also leaders getting up and saying that this is okay and that this is God and that we should allow this into the church. And so this is unscriptural for that to be being said at this time in history, because we have to know the Word of God. It's unscriptural, period. It shouldn't be allowed, period. But, you know, and being spoken from, from the platform, saying that this is not sin. And so we've got to know the Word of God, and we've got to know what the Word of God it says. And we talked about this in the previous chapter. And so, but also, what I'm talking about is, even if there are those within the church that stumble into sin, you know, we absolutely want to help them deal with those issues. We want to help them repent. We want to help them get freedom. We want to help them get deliverance. We want to help them to come out of that bondage, come out of that trap, and to walk in holiness and to walk restored, that they don't have to be bound by those sins that are in their lives. So this is part of what happens as well. And so I'm going to read to you another scripture, Matthew 7:15 through 20. "Constantly be on your guard against phony prophets. They come disguised as lambs, appearing to be genuine, but on the inside they are like wild ravenous wolves. You can spot them by their actions, for their fruits of their character will be obvious. You won't find sweet grapes hanging on a thorn bush, and you'll never pick good fruit from a tumbleweed. So if the tree is good, it will produce good fruit; but if the tree is bad, it will bear only rotten fruit, and it deserves to be cut down and burned. Look at the obvious fruit of their lives and ministries, and then you'll know whether they are true or false." All right? So what am I saying here? When we are functioning in discernment and we begin to sense that something is off, we take it and we intercede. And we're going to talk about the steps to go through. And I am not saying in any way, shape, or form that if people are in sin in the church that we just kick them out. No. What I'm saying is, we want to help people repent. We want to help them get freedom and deliverance. We want to help them be restored into righteous living. But then there are also some who will come and some who will appear very righteous who are not. And, and we have to have that understanding and discernment according to the Word of God as well. I will not name names, but there, and this, this was floating around a while back, but there was this prophet that, that was anointed. People are saying, oh, this guy brings healings. He's incredible. But when you would watch him, his videos on social media, he would sit on a throne and, oh, it was, he was sitting on a throne that was like a gold throne, and this, just that what was coming from him was such pride and arrogance and condemnation to anyone who did not listen to him. I mean, to me, that doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, there's something not right with this, and this is not something we should be entertaining. And so let me give you an example. You know, I've been doing ministry for a very long time, and I was invited years ago to be on an assignment, and it involved people internationally. And there was, and everybody that was on this assignment had to be prayed over, had to be vetted, meaning there was a group of leaders that really prayed over everyone that would be a part of this assignment. There was history with all the people that were asked to be a part of this prayer assignment. And all of a sudden, we show up, we're flying into this nation on this prayer assignment, and there's a gentleman that walks on the plane, and I looked at him, and instantly my spirit became alarmed. I just had red flags. You know, we talked about that last time. You have red flags, something's not right, it feels off. And, and I instantly, I just thought, Lord, I don't feel good about this person at all. I don't know why. Well, later, he comes over to us on the plane, and he, and we were told not to talk about this in our travels, not to talk about our assignments. You know, sometimes when you're doing strategic assignments, you need to be very covert and not announce it to the world. And other times, you want to bring people into the movement of what the assignment is. So you've really got to use discernment in that as well. This was one of those assignments that you, we weren't supposed to be announcing it from the rooftops, especially when we came into this nation because of safety issues. And so this gentleman, once we got up in the air, comes over to us on the plane, and he says, hey, are you a part of this team that's going to be praying over the next two weeks? And I turned and I looked at him, and I said, who are you and why are you asking? And, and this gentleman said, well, I've been invited at the very last minute to be on this team. And I said, what's your name? And he told me his name, and I looked at my list. I said, you're not on my list. Then he goes, oh, but I was invited at the very last minute, and he's talking really loud on purpose, so the whole plane can hear him and what he's saying about this assignment we were told not to talk about for a year in our travels when we were on the plane and going into this nation. And so I just gently shut off the conversation. I said, thank you for talking to me, but I need to get some sleep, and I, you know, I'm done with the conversation. Well, sure enough, he ends up on this team, got invited by the last minute by another leader that did not tell the other leaders on the team that this had occurred. And it was obvious that his motives for being there were very impure and very not okay. And so, you know, that we ended up in a situation, here, we're there to pray for the world and pray for this nation and for something that, that would affect the nations. And now we're dealing with this gentleman who is operating with impure motives. What he would say, what he would speak during prayer times was off. And so, anyway, finally, by the end of the trip, you know, and he, he kept saying he was being sent there to, to teach our team, the team, the part of the team that I was on, and to correct us and to teach us how to maneuver with the Lord. And it was just, anyway, it was just really, it was off. And so finally, it came to a point where the leaders, the several leaders on the team had had enough, and they called a meeting, and they said, you're done. You can no longer be a part of what we're doing. You're throwing things off. And shut the door to him. But, you know, and I could go through a very long drawn-out story. It's in the book. I typed it out more in the book, if you want to read it in chapter three. But suffice it to say, this guy was off. This guy was off. His spirit was off. His motives were off. He wasn't in tune with the vision that we had been praying into for a year. He got thrown in at the last minute, and he came saying, I am the prophet of this, and I'm here to tell all of you how to do this, you know, and I'm an angel sent from God for this team. I mean, it was just, wow! And so, you know, we, you know, and so finally, after, you know, halfway through the trip, it was realized by the, all the leaders on the team, and he got dealt with. And so in that situation, I discerned it from the very beginning, that I was not the team leader, nor was I the leader of the portion of the team I was on. So I had to submit this to the leader after several days of praying through it. I just went to the leader and said, listen, I will, I'm submitting this to you. I cannot shake this. I do not have peace about this. And I shared my heart with this leader. They said, you're confirming exactly what I think and what I'm sensing as well. Thank you for coming to me, and, and we will deal with this when the time is right, which is exactly what happened. And so even in that situation, I was discerning correctly and interceding into it correctly, but I took it to the leader. I did not usurp authority. I did not make it gossip. I took it at intercession, and then I took it to the leader and said, this, you know, this is the deal. And submitted it to them. And then there was a unity when it finally came time, you know, for everybody to deal with it. There was a unity among the leaders in order for them to be able to deal with it. Okay? And so we want to look at the origin and the motive of the judgment. All right? Because we're talking about perceiving, evaluating, deciding. And, and so I'm going to read to you Matthew 7:1 through 4. It says, "Refuse to be a critic full of bias toward others, and judgment will not be passed on you; for you'll be judged by the same standard that you've used to judge others. The measurements you use on them will be used on you. Why would you focus on the flaw in someone else's life and yet fail to notice the glaring flaws of your own? How could you say to your friend, let me show you what, where you're wrong when you're guilty of even more?" Okay? So Jesus, in this scripture, is identifying the wrong motive, okay, of a critical spirit. You will be judged, kryno, it's that same word, K-R-I-N-O, judged, evaluated, condemned by the same standard that you've used to judge others, meaning make a decision, evaluate, judge, or condemn others. So, but the standard by which you are evaluated, making decisions about and condemning others will also be used on you, is what Jesus is saying. So we got to look at the motives, right? Because we're supposed to discern, but we got to look at the motives. Judgments made in a critical or wrong spirit come with, that, that will come from motives or foundations such as bitterness, unforgiveness, hatred, a holier-than-thou mindset, enjoying fault finding in others for the sake of feeling better about yourself, a spirit of competition, feeling elite and above all in your knowledge. It can also be from a divisive spirit, a religious spirit, a defensive spirit, or one who is not allowed the purifying work of the Lord in their lives. So if the motive of sharing discernment is coming from any of that, like bitterness, unforgiveness, hatred, holier-than-thou mindset, enjoying finding fault in others to feel better about yourself, you know, a spirit of competition, wanting to feel elite above all in your knowledge, a divisive spirit, a religious spirit, a defensive spirit, you know, all of these are wrong motives to be sharing discernment from. And when discernment is shared from that viewpoint, from that motive, from that foundational motive or tenet, our functioning ability, that is off. It is off. It doesn't mean, hey, maybe even some of the discernment is accurate, but when it gets shared from that motive, when it gets shared from that motive, then that is an impure motive to be sharing that discernment. Okay? I shared in chapter two, how the Lord led me in discerning a sin issue in a church many, many years ago. Not one time did I make what I was hearing a gossip session. First and foremost, I took the discernment and revelation to intercession because I am a firm believer. Oswald Chambers was the one that originated with this quote. Corey Ten Boom would use it a lot as well. Discernment is God's call to intercession, never to fault finding. So when we're, when we are getting these spiritual alarms and red flags, we want to take it to intercession and to the Lord first. And we want to say, Lord, what is it that you want me to do with this? And then from that place of intercession and talking to the Lord first is then based on what He says to do is what you do this. So in my intercession time, I felt the Lord leaving me to schedule a time to speak with the leader who had been in a ministry alignment with the pastor, the leader, with whom I also had a relationship with, that I was discerning things about. Okay? But before that meeting happened, the sin was fully exposed, but I still went ahead and had the meeting with that leader. And I still said, I was seeing this, I was feeling this, I was sensing this, and, you know, I just, I, did I hold it too long? And that leader said to me, you did everything the Lord told you to do. You took it at intercession. You had already, when the Lord released you to contact me, you did it. I scheduled it when I would be back in town, when you could tell me. And, you know, and so, you know, but then even from when I shared with them, we were able to pray and say, Lord, how can we help those who will be coming to us in the midst of this trauma that now they've experienced? How can we now use what you've shown us to help them and to work through the disappointment, the hurt of what has happened? How can we pray for them? How can we continue to pray for this leader that they will receive complete freedom and healing and deliverance, right? And so the motive behind these things have to be pure. Okay? So here's something that's very key. Discernment sees with the eyes of the Father. Okay? So the carnel man, someone that's not saved, is not able to judge a spiritual man or things of the spirit, because he does not know our Heavenly Father. So he can't look at the things of the spirit, a lost man, and be able to really speak into that real well. But Paul says in 1 Corinthians 2:13 through 14, "We join together spirit-revealed truths with spirit-revealed words. Someone living on an entirely human level rejects the revelation of God's Spirit, for they make no sense to him. However, as believers and as sons and daughters of our Heavenly Father, we can discern things and do so with the sight of our Heavenly Father." Now, I'm going to give you a scriptural example here, and I have the subtitle in the chapter, Samuel learns to see with the Father's sight. So we are all familiar with Samuel the prophet and the role that he played with Saul and with David, right? We're very familiar with that. So after Saul's disobedience to God and the Lord's rejection of him, you know, as king due to his rebellion, Samuel was now given instructions, hey, go anoint a new king. You know, you, you need to find that new king. You need to anoint him. So I want to read to you this encounter. It's 1 Samuel 16:7. And Samuel says, "He held a sacrifice in inviting Jesse and his sons to come. During this consecration time, all of Jesse's sons, they passed before Samuel. And as Samuel looked upon Eliah, he thought, oh..." He says this, this is a quote from the word. "Surely he is the anointed one of the Lord." It's first, you can look at 1 Samuel 16:6. But let's look at the, our Lord, our Heavenly Father's response. "He said to Samuel, 'Do not look on his appearance or on the height of his stature, because I have rejected him; for the Lord sees not as man sees; for man looks on the outward appearance, but the Lord looks at the heart.'" These are powerful words. And it's, it's really a great teaching moment, not only for Samuel, but it is for us as well, because our Heavenly Father was teaching Samuel that he will lebat. The Hebrew word is lebat, N-A-B-A-T. It means he will judge, or he'll, our judgments made on perception of physical sight. So the Lord Himself was teaching him that man, sorry, that man will lebat, meaning that they're going to see and perceive on physical sight. But our Heavenly Father doesn't yareh, Y-A-R-E-H, approve, judge, discern, and evaluate as man does, but based on the appearance. So we'll look at someone's appearance, and lots of times, we'll make very quick judgments, right? But God doesn't judge yareh based on someone's appearance. He does so by looking and seeing at the lebat, L-E-B-A-T, the mind, soul, spirit, and source of inner life of a person. Listen to this, "with the focus of this action being on feelings, thoughts, and volition." So what a great scriptural example of a prophet being taught directly to hear the Lord and perceive. So, you know, what, what was it? What was Samuel being taught? And I'm going to read this exact quote to you because it's powerful. He was being taught how to discern who Jesse's sons were not and to see who David was. So we all know the story. He saw David, he discerned, and he was the one, uh, one that was anointed uh, with oil and preparation for his calling to be the king, right? And so we've got to understand when we are functioning in discernment, we will see with the sight of heaven and the eyes of the our Heavenly Father. And so I have to remind myself many times, many, many, many times, I have to remind myself. Because you know, I was saved at the age of twelve. Those of you who followed my teachings for a long time, read my books. I'm very transparent about my testimony, saved at the age of twelve, baptized. But there was a period of time I walked in rebellion in the world for like almost two and a half, three year period of time. The Lord called me back into the church. I had the great freedom and deliverance. And so sometimes we forget how gracious and merciful God was to us personally. And we tend to uh, look at people and make very quick judgments about them. But I, lots of times I have to remember, I came out of that as well. Lord, I, I struggled with that as well. God, thank you for your grace and mercy in my life and that you came and rescued me out of that darkness and that you set me free. And so, you know, it doesn't mean that we're not helping, you know, we're not, we're pushing things under the rug and not helping people. But how we see them and how we help them is very, very important. Because God looks at the heart. So someone might be struggling with something, but their heart might be, I want to be set free. I want to come out of this. I want to be whole. So we want to help the people that genuinely want to have the help. And it might take some time for them to fully be able to step into the grace of that help. So but we, so we have to learn to hear the Lord. You know, Lord, it, you know, do I continue to help this person? Do I not? Do I continue to pray, you know? And so we've got to see and hear with the eyes of the Father. Think about Jesus and Peter, right? Jesus, you know, with, you know, Peter, I mean, we know this moment. I teach this when I teach about the authority that we have as Ecclesia. Read my book Glory Warfare, right? I have a whole chapter on this. He's the kingdom and the authority that he's given us. And Matthew sixteen, you know, Peter's, you know, Jesus says, who do people say that I am? And they say, some say Elijah, some say a prophet, some say Jeremiah. And Jesus says, who do you say that I am? And you gotta love Peter. He got it right. He said, you are Jesus, the son of the most high living God. And woo, man, Peter got it. He released the revelation. He got the right revelation. And Jesus says, blessed are you, Simon Bar Jonah, because on this rock I will build my church, the revelation of who I am. He's like, Simon, good job, man. But then in the next story that we read, he's, you know, when he's saying he's going to have to suffer much, Jesus is, and he's going to be persecuted and, and that he's going to be crucified and, you know, tortured. And Peter looks at him and says, no, Lord, this should never happen to you. And Jesus says, get behind me, Satan. Now, I don't think it was Satan manifesting through Peter. I think Peter's emotions and love for Jesus became as much of a stumbling block as if it was Satan saying to him himself. I would not ever want any of you on this to go through horrible persecution and torture. My first response would be, oh, Lord, no, right? And so, and so Jesus knew what he had to do and even the love of his friends, because out of emotion wasn't discerning correctly. Jesus said, get behind me, Satan, because it was as much like Satan speaking to him, even out of that emotion and that that friendship of Peter not wanting Jesus to have to suffer. And so, but then, then let's look at Peter. Then they show up at the garden and Peter takes the sword and he cuts the ear off of that centurion, right? And Jesus says, put the sword away. And he takes the ear up and he puts it back on the guy and heals it. And at the time where Jesus needs Peter, the most Peter denies that he even knows him three times. Right? So let's look at Peter, right? And then, but Jesus saw him with the eyes of the Father. And Jesus saw past that maturing process that he was going to have to go through and in who Peter was supposed to be. So even though Peter had anger issues, he needed uh, to mature in his emotions, uh, even though he would kind of be, you know, one time he'd be radical on and the next time he'd be radical off. Even think about this, after, after, you know, Pentecost, right? And the Holy Spirit comes and then Peter's in this trance. And the Lord shows him all these unclean foods and he sees it three times. And Peter says, never, Lord, will I ever eat anything unclean. Well, God was repairing him, that he was about to share the message of the gospel with the Gentiles, the first to do so, and that would change the course of Christianity and the history of the world. So even in his first initial reaction, Lord, never, I'll never eat anything unclean. But then they show up, they knock at the door, they tell him about Cornelius. He goes, he preaches the gospel, they get, they get saved, right? God shows up and it changes the history of Christianity in the world. So even in that initial reaction, Peter said, never. But then when God showed up and he began to understand, he did step into it. Praise God that he did. And so Jesus, even with Peter, was able to see beyond the immaturity and, and to see beyond his emotions. And we gotta love Peter. He's radical all over the place and he makes us feel good in our humanness. So when we discern, we want to see with the eyes of the Father. And we want to hear with the eyes of the Father and not from our own emotion and flesh. Right? And all of that list that I shared above. Now, Jesus could perceive beyond the darkest. He could perceive beyond the darkest of strongholds, right? So he literally was able to see beyond the utterly evil and depraved condition of the gathering demoniac. Guys, that was pretty bad. And he was able to see and perceive beyond that. He discerned, he cast out that army of demons and this man was victoriously set free. So and, and he saw, uh, he perceived and he saw a man whose freedom, whose freedom, even when the freedom came, it struck great fear in the entire region through the victory that was ordained by his Heavenly Father. And so he was able to see, listen, these people aren't even going to like when he gets the freedom, but I'm still going to set the man free. I'm going to cast out the legion. I'm going to cast it out, going to cast it in the pig. That's a whole other prophetic teaching and that I won't go into. But and, and this man got radically set free. I mean, and this guy was scary. And so, you know, we have to be able to see and perceive with the sight of our Heavenly Father when we're discerning. Then let's look at this, Jesus perceived the hearts of those who weren't right. And I'm going to read to you Matthew twenty-three, verses one through five. Then Jesus addressed both the crowds and his disciples and said, the religious scholars and the Pharisees sit at Moses's throne as the authorized interpreters of the law. So listen and follow what they teach, but don't do what they do. For they will tell you one thing and do another. They tie on your backs an oppressive burden of religious obligations and insist that you carry it, but will never lift a finger to help ease your load. Everything they do is done for show and to be noticed by others. They want to be seen as holy. Wow, woo, all right. So here you've got Jesus seeing these people that are demonized and the woman with the issue of blood and all of these others. He saw them beyond where they were and they were radically set free and they're radically healed. But then he, he sees right here, uh, that, um, you know, and perceived from them, they're going to tell you the right things, but don't do what they do. Don't do those actions. That's not godly. That's not righteous. What they're teaching you, listen to, he says that, I'll say it again. The religious scholars and the Pharisees sit on Moses's throne as the authorized interpreters of the law. So listen and follow what they teach, but don't do what they do. Okay? And so, you know, he used uh, them and their poor behaviors as an object lesson to his disciples and those that he taught. He spoke with wisdom and truth, clearly stating they were not to follow what had been modeled by these religious leaders, but to follow his lead of humility and his kingdom, understanding humility and service. So what about others in the Word of God? You know, Peter discerned, well, we already talked about this through the vision and the trance. Paul discerned the spirit operating in the slave girl and cast it out. As a, as a result, the entire ci- city of Philippi began to experience salvation and transformation. He did not preach in Turkey when he was instructed by, to by the Lord not to go. Instead, he ministered and had great impact in Asia. You know, so Paul, discerning the will of the Father beyond human concern and emotion, chose to go to Jerusalem even when others begged him to not go out of genuine and great concern. They were like, don't go. And he said, I'm going. The Lord told me to go. I'm going. But you're, it's dangerous for you. Don't go. The Lord told me to go. I'm going. So with discernment, not only are we discerning and seeing with the heart of the Father, but we're learning how to say, okay, we're going to listen to what's being said there. But those actions, not so good. I'm not going to follow those actions. So discernment literally causes us to be able to discern, to separate bone and marrow, right? And, and joint and marrow that we're able, you know, to, to discern. And so we, we have to, we have to know, Lord, is this me or is this you? When we're discerning. So one of the key concepts that we have to be intentional to mature in is separating what is Holy Spirit, what is our own thoughts, opinions, and emotions. Okay? So I'm not going to others sharing discernment about others based on my own opinions. I don't do that. I do it based on what I hear the Lord saying. So at a personal level, we might be seeing, hearing, and discerning correctly. Yet the Lord many times will not and does not release us to share the revelation for great periods of time. This has happened with me. It is a kingdom principle. He will take us through testing times before he allows us to share. He deals with our character and takes us through circumstances and situations to ensure our motives are pure and emotionally that we ourselves are healed. So this is done that we will function in a mature manner and not in the motives of a critical mindset or a wounded soul. And this is so very important because if our soul is wounded and we're releasing our discernment through our woundedness, it's not going to be a pure stream. Might be discerning correctly, but if it's through our own woundedness that we're releasing that discernment, that's not a pure stream. Listen, I have had to get before the Lord multiple times when I have discerned things with other people. And I've had to say, Lord, I'm praying into this. Lord, I'm going to intercede for this person. I'm going to intercede that you touch them. I'm going to intercede for healing. I'm going to intercede for restoration. I'm going to intercede, Father God, that your best will come uh, in, in their lives. Lord, I'm going to intercede from that place. Lord, help me love this person with your heart. And let me pray and intercede for this we- this situation from your heart and how you want me to pray and to intercede. And so if discernment is operating from hurt feelings, woundedness, and fleshly opinions, we got to welcome the Holy Spirit to bring healing and deliverance to those areas and to release purity to the gift. And, and he will aid us in this process. I'm being really real. There are times I said, Lord, I know I need to pray this, but I don't want to. This hurts, what this person has said, what they've done, it's hurtful. But I, I, the Lord, but I'll go before the Lord and say, Lord, help me carry this discernment in a pure heart. So even when I share that discernment, it's coming from a place of purity, not emotion, not criticalness, uh, not, um, you know, uh, fear, you know, but out of just a purity, listen, I really think this could be an issue. This, this could be going on. Do you see what I'm saying? And so how do we grow in this? All right? We, we got, we got about 10 more minutes, learning from experience. We got to spend time nurturing this gift. There's therefore, guys, I started this chapter now, no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus. Are we going to get it a hundred percent right all the time? No, but we, we want to grow. We want to mature. We want to develop into how we're handling our gifting where it's done in a mature, wise manner and not one that is done where it makes it difficult for others to receive from the package that it's being delivered from, right? Um, and so, um, and so if a person, I'm just going to say this. If frankly, if a person has no intention of developing intimacy with the Father and allowing him to transform them, them, that person themselves from glory to glory, they should not release discernment concerning others because they're not allowing God to do the deep work in them. So yes, the gift is without reproach. It's going to be there. But character is way more important than the gift. And I've witnessed many guys who have such a strong gift, but they abuse the revelation in a power play or in a competition. So when the fruit of their lives reveals the motives of their heart, often there is, is impurity and the desire to be heard before the growth, discipleship, and maturity has transpired. So there is a vast difference between impurity and immaturity. And those who desire to be teachable will grow to be trusted. And the Lord will graciously, he takes each of us through seasons of discipleship and growth. Praise God, I still have it in my life, right? Those that speak into my life. So once he knows hearts can be trusted and motives are being led in obedience to him, he entrusts more to us. So he, remember, he reveals the secret to those who abide in him, vitally united to him, who have learned to move in obedience to him instead of overzealousness to be heard or to be known. I fully believe God does not have favorites, but he does have intimates. And his desire is that he wants for each of us to be intimate with him. He wants to be intimate with each of us. And so we got to worship him. We got to learn to sit in his presence. We got to learn until his presence manifests. We've got to learn to read the Word. When we're reading the Word, Holy Spirit, let this come alive in me. Lord, give me increased wisdom. Give me increased discernment. But Lord, let me see and hear and operate in purity of motive, Lord, from your heart and not my own. Right? So we abide in him. John fifteen, four says, dwell in me and I will dwell in you, live in me and I will live in you. Just as no branch can bear fruit of itself without abiding in, being vitally united to the vine, neither can you bear fruit unless you abide in me. And so this word abide, what does it mean? It means to remain, dwell, continue, not to depart from, to continue to be present, to be held, to be kept. In other words, we abide and we become so in tune with his presence from the dedicated times of entering in beyond the veil into his glory, into his throne room, that we grow in the ability to hear him, to stay connected to him, to stay in existence with him. We know we are close to him. His presence is real to us, right? We are not separate or apart, but vitally united to him. And it says this in John fifteen, thirteen through sixteen. No one has greater love, no one has shown stronger affection than to lay down, give up his own life for his friends. You are my friends. If you keep on doing the things which I commanded you to do, I do not call you servants any longer. For the servant does not know what his master is doing while working out, but I've called you my friends because I have made known to you everything that I've heard from my father. Wow, I have revealed to you everything that I learned from him. This is from the Amplified. You have not chosen me, but I've chosen you and I have appointed you. I have planted you that you might go and bear fruit and keep on bearing and that your fruit may be lasting, that it may remain and abide so that whenever you ask the Father in my name as presenting all that I am, he may give it to you. Isn't that a powerful scripture? So we want to abide in him. We want to know whose we are, who we are. We want to be his friend, right? And so this is why we want to dialogue with him through our discernment. He's our friend. He's the, he's our lover, our soul, teacher, master, Savior. Take it to him. Lord, I'm discerning this. What do I do with this? How do I maneuver with this? How do I handle? He's going to know better. He's going to know the best. And then we intercede and we partner with him. And then based on what he's telling us to do, we begin to do those things and to move forward. So we learn to ask and we learn to listen. This is something we gotta learn. We ask and we wait and we listen. We listen to him. We listen. So not only do we wanna hear his voice, we want to mature in conversing with him. So when we, when we discern a situation, begin to ask questions from that abiding place about how, what is his design for handling that revelation? Trust me, if he's gonna reveal something in your gifting, he will also help you maneuver in the revelation with wisdom and in the right timing. It's so vital to engage him in the complete process of the revelation we are just, we discern, right? So if we're constantly just speaking at someone and not listening, we're not gonna mature and we're not gonna grow. Then we have to say, is this my assignment? God, or am I, cause I discern a lot of things, guys. If I dealt with everything I discerned, I'd be worn out all the time. Is this my assignment to deal with, Lord? If it's not, okay, I'm just discerning it and I'm gonna trust you in it, God. This is somebody else's assignment, not mine. Peter Wagner knew my zealousness and he would turn to me and say, choose your battles wisely, darling. Do not take up a battle if it is not yours. And so, you know, we wanna know, is this my assignment? Am I to deal with this? Not every person is my assignment. Not every demonic situation going on in a city or region is my assignment. There are, and what I'm called to deal with. There might be others. Maybe I'm just to intercede and pray for those who are to deal with it, right? And so, and then you wanna submit revelation to those who function in authority. You know, I released this prophetic word last year at, at May of last year. I got it in April. It was a vision. And I went to Cindy Jacobs and I said, Cindy, what do you think about this word? And Chuck Pearson then sought, why do y'all think about this word? This is God released the word. People need to begin praying in it. We're living in the Word right now. We are living in a portion of that vision from 2019. Right now, we're living in it and it's unfolding. But you know, that was a pretty weighty word. When you're hearing expose, 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 historic movements of exposure, historic movements of corruption, chaos, all of this, I'm like, wow, this is not like a real, you know, it's, it's directional and, and it, the, the outcome was good. It's for cleansing and for glory awakening and holiness movement and righteous government. But at the same time, oh my goodness, it was a heavy word. And they said, release this word. This is the Lord. And so I still function this way. I, I, I still function this way. It's just like, y'all have heard me share the key story from Wales. You know, I, I, I went, we were having the meal with Dutch and Cece. I said, I'm gonna tell you about something that happened when we went to Wales. And, and Dutch, you know, this fact that this is a sign and a wonder of the Ecclesia, what we've been preaching in the new era and the authority that we're entering into. And he said some things to me personally about it as well. But I'm just saying, you know, there's, there's that place of, of taking things to those. Once you've talked to the Lord and you've gotten his heart on it, taking it to those and saying, here, what do I do with this? Watch your wisdom in this? And then we can take it and pray together, right? And so red light revelation, I'm gonna go for two more minutes and we're gonna stop because I've got another meeting in five minutes I've gotta be on. So, uh, if someone is functioning as a lone ranger in the body of Christ, I'm just gonna say it. They have no relationships. They're out there as a lone ranger. They wanna do everything on their own and they only want people speaking into their lives when they need help, but they don't wanna establish relationship or alignment to help empower them. Um, if the likelihood that their discernment is going to be just received from those they share it with, whoop, is gonna be very minimal, okay? So if someone arrives on the scene with no relationship and then begin releasing words of discernment, prophetic words, judgmental words, directional, correctional words, it's just not gonna be received, okay? Uh, relationship is very important and the history of relational experience is valuable when sharing. So when functioning in discernment, be cautious or avoid sharing, you know, sexual sin, adultery, personal sin in a public forum. This should be done in a private deliverance session or with other leaders going, I'm sensing this. What do I do with this? I'm not in leadership. You are. Can I bring this to you? You, you wanna, you want to handle things in a right way where the good, the positive outcome can come for everybody involved, okay? Um, I prophesy over multitudes of cities, regions, and nations. But I do, you know, these are things I do not get involved in. I don't get involved in spiritual matchmaking. Have I seen in the spirit, people that are gonna end up together in marriage? Yes. And I've taken it and I've prayed for it privately, but I didn't go up and say, God told me you're gonna marry that me. I don't practice spiritual ma- uh, matchmaking. I'm cautious, um, on speaking out discernment concerning new jobs and moves. Uh, it doesn't mean I don't speak it, but I'm cautious in how I word those things. And I'll have to just do a whole other teaching on this, but Major Life Decisions, you can read the book. Um, even in the midst of prophesying, I'm listening to the Holy Spirit on how to share and what to share and when to share. And I'm gonna end, uh, I'm gonna end while I got three more minutes. I'll just get off right at 11. Um, so I was so close. 2 Samuel 12, 1 through 7, a great example of how Nathan handled David. "And the Lord sent Nathan the prophet to David. They had relationship. He came and said to him, 'There were two men in a city, one rich and the other poor. The rich man had a very large number of flocks and herd, but the poor man had nothing but one little ewe lamb, which he had purchased and nursed, and it grew up together with him and his children. It ate his food, drank from his cup; it lay in his arms. It was like a daughter to him.' Now a traveler came to the rich man, and to avoid taking one from his own flock or herd, prepared a meal for the traveler, who would come to him. He took the poor man's ewe lamb and prepared it for his guest. Then David's anger burned intensely against the man, and he said, Nathan, 'As the Lord lives, this man who has done this deserves to die. He shall make restitution for the ewe lamb four times as much as a lamb was worth, because he did this thing and had no compassion.' Then David said to David, 'You are the man.'" Wow. So how the Lord even had him share that correction, haha, right? Was the way that David could receive it and it got his attention. So he didn't come into David's presence and blurt out the sin that David had committed. He sought the Lord and came prepared to share the truth of David's sin in a manner that he could receive it, okay? And so anyway, you gotta read the book, guys. Read the book. And then, um, then the green light revelation to share. Uh, you want, you know, green, discernment prophetic revelation, share words of exhortation, encouragement, comfort, confirmation, hope, kingdom, direction, words of destiny, words of deliverance and freedom, even words of transition and direction, even if you're discerning something in the spirit, totally good to share. But the way that you share it is important and doing it in the right protocol is very, very important in order that it can be received, all right? And sometimes you might be with people that just don't wanna hear the discernment period. You know, that's true as well. So I pray this is helpful. Get the book. Lord, I thank you for everyone that is watching this teaching, that it blesses them, that it empowers them. Lord, I just thank you, Father God, that the gift in each of them will increase, that will mature, will grow in purity. And Lord, we give you all the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you guys. We'll talk to you next time. Bye-bye.